Hello. Yeah. 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 I don't know. Yeah. 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 Is there any other things?
Well, yes.
That's how you want to call it.
Well, you got it.
So. Yeah. Then they are. Four. You have a lot of this though. It's all down. They will put. That's in the thousand. Whatever. I agree. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know. But I'm. Who matters? Oh, yeah. It's. Okay. My. Oh. Okay.
I just like.
Yeah.
I thought.
Yeah. That was just. Oh, my God. Turned around. I feel a situation. Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. You have a good thought.
Oh, no.
Okay. And please. Okay. Yeah. Uh, what part about?
I said.
This. Are you? Okay. Okay. Part. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. I'll lose my sense of place still. Are you not an object?
Yeah.
For you. So we, uh. Well, we probably need to. Not around. I'm pretty. Oh, I would. In here. But. Um. Unless, um, seven, eight, nine. Um. Okay. But. Or do you?
That's impossible. Okay.
Oh, that's cool.
Yes.
Yeah. 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 Just. Your. Your. I'm. I will. Very much. I. But. Never. Before. So. Uh. I mean. You. What? Yeah. Three. Uh. Oh. Like. See. So. Thank you. Uh. Yeah. No, no, not that. That. We don't. Yeah. 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 Okay. Hmm. Uh.
Hey, uh, what's, what's going on? Of course, you don't, you're not from here, so you don't know what the old girl beat plays was. Next to the hand, I mean, next to the kent. Who's going in there?
Party.
No, right there. From Paul Martin.
Good morning, everyone. It's nine o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Uh, Bill Waddell, pastor of the First Baptist Church, will lead us in invocation today. Please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we need your help in everything, uh, in our personal lives and our day-to-day living. And we especially need your help on, on a level that we're talking about here, city level. God, we pray that what happens here would be for your glory, because we know when you're glorified, God, it's going to be what's best for all the people. So we ask God of blessings over this meeting and wisdom, uh, directly from you. Thank you. Uh, we pray, God, you protect us here, uh, that you would, um, guide us here, be with us here. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you for the privilege.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clinton, do you have any ceremonial matters, proclamations for employee recognition?
No, sir. Nothing this morning.
Okay. Counsel comments?
I will jump in. Um, I just want to extend my appreciation to the Gillespie County Historical Society for the tour of homes this past, uh, weekend. Uh, we had an estimated eight hundred and fifty folks that came through, uh, seven homes. The theme was a walk-through time. Uh, we sold out all of the market preview, uh, tickets. And I want to thank, uh, council member Watson for being one of the close to seven hundred docents that volunteered their time and came out and did that and showcased our community in such a wonderful fashion. Um, I also wanted to just indicate that I attended the last leadership breakfast, uh, under the, uh, leadership of Penny. And want to thank her for her extended leadership in this, in this community for many, many years as the baton passes to Jim McCula, who will now head up the, uh, Chamber of Commerce. Uh, it was a great event. Chris Canese was at present, uh, and the theme was water, water conservation. A lot of good information came out of that, so thank you.
I just want to bring up something that, um, that we are. Apparently, I don't like the city to have to govern everything, but it seems like we've got some billboards on Main Street that have appeared, uh, in, on mobile wheels. And I guess we have to address that. I'm, I'm quite disappointed those four buses have been sitting there for a couple of weeks and haven't moved. So they're not even being used on weekends. So unfortunately, I think we're forced to do another ordinance on signage, which might include them, but just FYI.
Wanted to thank Jennifer Crouppa in Caitlin, Brazil, of the Parks Department on a wonderful Saint Martin's Day celebration. This is a new tradition that's very family-friendly, um, that we partnered with the Pioneer Memorial Museum over and, um, had a small but mighty group of kids, um, and honored Saint, um, Saint Martin, who incidentally is the patron saint of innkeepers and ventners. So I think it's very appropriate for our town. Anyway, that'll be every November eleventh, hopefully.
Um, I, I attended the EDC board meeting on the seventeenth. Uh, a lot of stuff still going in town, a lot of people still interested in moving here. Uh, businesses, individuals. Um, the one thing that I did see that sales tax for the last few months have, have been fairly flat, still ahead of last year, but not by much. Um, so we'll keep an eye on that. Um, yesterday, excuse me, we had the, uh, charter review committee met yesterday morning. We, uh, went over what we thought was last minute details. We still got a few more things to review, so our next meeting will be December the eighth. Then we'll re- repair, repair, prepare a report to, for city council, and that should happen in January. And then, um, the, or, and then the council will vote, um, in February, first meeting of February to call for the election, uh, for revisions to our charter. And then yesterday afternoon, went to the airport review board. Um, a lot of activity at the airport again. Uh, the, mark your calendar, their Santa fly-in will be December the sixteenth from one to four P M. Hangar occup, de-hanger occupancy is still at a hundred percent with thirty-two on the waitlist. Um, we have twenty out of possibly eighty-four reservations for the Eclipse, uh, next April. And we're still on target to, uh, sell about five hundred thousand gallons of aviation fuel this year. Uh, Jet A has increased the last three months, so we've seen more activity there. But that's down from our record last year of five hundred and thirty-seven thousand gallons. So that's all I have. Anybody else, anything else? Okay. Move on to the consent agenda, which is the minutes from our regular council meeting on November seventh. Any comments, changes?
I move that we approve the November seventh regular minutes with the edits, minor edits that Shelley sent out last night.
A second. We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion passes. Item seven, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. A, consider the approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty, amending articles five point zero, constructions permit, constructions permits and fees, and five point five zero application fees. Um, appendix A, fee schedule of the Fredericksburg Municipal Code to revise fees for applications related short-term rental permits, development, zoning, and Board of Adjustment Appeals, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all ordinances provided, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Anna?
Good morning, Council. Um, so we're bringing to you today a, an ordinance, a fee ordinance that's changing, um, some of our existing development fees. Uh, there are some fees that we have never charged, such as annexation, um, and then some fees that we're just looking to increase because it's been a while since we've done so. Uh, we took a look at several other comparable cities such as Cedar Park, Kerrville, Bernie, and Marble Falls, uh, to see if we were in the, in the range, uh, on some of these fees. And so I've got a summary table here for you showing, uh, some of the fees that have never been charged and what we're proposing, and then the comparison. So like a conditional use permit, you saw several of those this year. Uh, we were charging four hundred and we're proposing going up to five hundred for that. Um, a new fee that we, a separate fee that we haven't charged before, um, would be a newspaper notification. Those public hearings require us to send a notification to the, to the newspaper and run it twice, and then do mailouts to, uh, property owners within the two hundred foot boundary. So those are separate line items, um, that we will charge, and that's pretty standard across the board for other cities to do that as well. So just trying to come in line, um, and make sure that the developers are covering the costs, the expenses that they're incurring on staff. So, um, one other section would be the short-term rentals and the discussion with the, um, of course, we've been discussing these for over a year now, and at one time, uh, talking about changing the fee, um, which was based, you know, previously on anticipating hiring an S T R specialist and a new code enforcement officer, which we did do. But that, that was based on not doing an, a, an inspection for every renewal. And then with this new ordinance, of course, we are doing an inspection for every renewal. So that means every permit that's processed will be handled by no less than S T R specialist and a code enforcement officer. If there's anything particular, you know, odd about the, the permit or requires any other, um, considerations, then that just means more staff time. So proposing new S T R fees, um, based on the bedroom, and then also creating a, just a flat transfer fee and a reinspection fee. And then, like, the creation of a special exception, which didn't exist before, so providing for a fee for that. Uh, the one, um, issue that Rachel, I believe, is on the phone and can talk to a little bit more, um, and why this was delayed, we'd put this on a previous agenda, but then had to pull it because the state changed the way that we can do, um, engineering fees. We've never charged engineering, several fees have never been charged for engineering. Um, and so we were proposing those in a previous draft, but Rachel caught that there was a state, uh, statute this year that changed how we can collect those engineering fees. And so we've got some kind of generic language saying that we will follow the state rules, but internally, we've not decided which option we want to go with. There's a couple of different options where we can reach out to a third-party engineering firm, ask them how much they would charge to do this plan review, and then essentially charge that much. Um, we can do billable hours, meaning that we wouldn't charge until after we've performed the value, the review, um, and then collect the fees based on a billable hour for the engineering team. Um, or we could do a third-party review. So the language that's in the ordinance right now just gives us the option to do any of those. Um, but staff's going to need a little bit more time to, to talk to other cities to see what's working because it's, it's such a new, um, requirement.
I will note that Rachel is online with us, so she's here virtually. If you have any questions. Any discussion?
Uh, Anna, we talked ever so briefly, um, this morning about the P U D park, for example. Um, it's, and give me some guidance here. This is an area I'm not an expert, um, by any stretch. But the P U D went from four hundred to seven hundred and fifty bucks, and I'm thinking specifically about the muse. I believe that applies to the muse, right? So that's twenty-two acres, three hundred thousand square feet. That's an extensive amount of work by city staff. Um, is, is the seven hundred and fifty appropriate? I, just intuition says it's a larger scope of work.
Right, and it's a flat fee. Um, PUDs are a minimum of three acres, and there's, there's certain things that we're always looking for. Um, and then, then our requirements to, to submit a PUD, right? They have to do a certain amount of work for us, so we're essentially doing a, a technical review. Um, and we've never charged it before. Well, it was just a, considered a, a, a basic zoning change.
I think it's four hundred on the comparison.
Correct, yes. It was just a, a basic zoning charge. So, you know, we're kind of basing it again based on other cities and what they charge. Um, but that's what, that's what we're proposing for now, and then we can kind of evaluate. We don't have a lot of those. Um, and then with the PUD, it's, it's also a public hearing notification, so we would be getting the fee for the state, for the newspaper and, and the, uh, the notices to the property owners. So on top of the seven fifty.
Let me ask you, this last time that these fees were looked at, do you know when they were actually, uh, reviewed or rechanged? Before Garrett was born?
No.
No. I want to say we looked at these back in, probably even, uh, made an amendment to the fees back in the twenty twenty-one timeframe. It's just not that. I've got some questions about, uh, and, and I realize there's some costs in doing these things, but I, like, the short-term rental was apparently, it was not fee, now it's three hundred dollars, which is, and I don't know from a justification from the time it takes. Uh, inspections are going to seventy-five, uh, but there, there, it seems like, uh, looks like we shot, we really hit the short-term rentals, or I guess my best, um, look at it, the variance application went up twice as much. So I, some of that is the justification, how, how we're coming up with that. I realize there's some fees, uh, that, what's the verification letter? It's fifty dollars, but down below it says two fifty, so I'm not sure what that. Or is that the vesting determination?
Right, those are different. Um, so the S T Rs, we have charged fees before. The, the only new one would be a flat fee for the transfer. There's just never been a transfer fee.
Which is now, uh.
Three hundred.
Yeah, it was nothing before, so it seemed like a high jump there.
But it, yeah. Um, and since we allow a transfer, and it obviously creates staff work, and it's going to create an inspection, so the inspection fee is built into that application fee. That is a reinspection. You wouldn't believe how many times we have to go out and re-inspect an S T R. It fails the first time, second time. And so the new ordinance says if you fail twice, then you're, you're starting over.
Let me ask you just from, uh, so that's now yearly? Right?
Yes, because.
So that's going to add three hundred dollars to these S T Rs yearly.
This is a S T R transfer of ownership.
Only if they transfer.
Transfer, I thought.
Right.
Transfers three hundred dollars.
Correct.
Well, that's right, that's right. That's a different thing to the inspections. I just, uh, and I know we didn't get this a few days ago, but that. Uh, and, and you shared with us in the beginning that you did compared to the other cities, although we're probably the leader of short-term rentals anyway. But to compare, I, I just want to make sure we're not overindulging ourselves on that.
Do we have, like, the average nightly rate for S T Rs?
I think it varies. I mean, inefficiencies probably one fifteen, those five bedrooms are probably a thousand.
This is like one half to one night. But, I mean, just as a comparison, but also the staff work that has gone into this for so long and the added staff. I think it makes sense to, to look at this. And this, I mean, this is user fee. You know, you don't have to pay this unless you are, you know, wanting to change your zoning or wanting to amend your PUD or whatever it is. So, um, I didn't have any issues with anything, and I appreciate y'all looking at, um, similar towns. Um, my one thing was on the effective date. Is it going to be a, looks at the ordinance, it would be effective today. So does that mean, you know, are y'all ready to go so that someone applies for something tomorrow? They would have the new, or is it, do we need, have it effective to give y'all time to?
That's a good question. Um, so the software that we use for, um, budgeting is, is Springbrook, and so staff has kind of pre-populated those. I would say, given the S T R ordinance being an effective date of, of January one, um, would recommend that those fees be delayed to go, because that was a lot of the, the impact too, right? These fees are responding to the impact of that ordinance. Um, so if that portion were to be delayed to January first, um, or at this point, if they're all delayed to January first, that's okay. I mean, we are right now, just, there's just, it's more on the development side. There's things that we just haven't charged for, um, but another month won't really make or break.
So I have a question for Rachel, if you're there. This is Randy Riley, and I do disclosure on the short-term rental, so I want to make sure I'm operating properly here. Uh, because the S T R is within the body of a larger document that addresses, um, development, uh, fees and other things, am I able to further comment on this and vote on this? I did reach out to Mick this morning without a response.
That's a great question, Councilor. Um, let me, let's see. First of all, can you all hear me? Just make it clear.
Yes.
I'm a little concerned about rushing this thing in without some transparency, letting people, I, I realize we're going to have comments, uh, but, but they have a right to. Uh, so part of my, my thought on this is that I don't want to rush this thing in and do one meeting and approve it without, uh, hearing some comments.
We do have one verbal comment, so we'll get to that in just a moment. So Rachel, are you okay with the proceeding, or should I hold on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you give me one moment? I want to pull up, uh, reference real quick.
Sure.
While we're sitting here, I'm just looking, and I see that on the comparison, it shows that the newspaper notification is one hundred, but in the ordinance, it's a hundred and fifty. I know ordinance trumps this, but, and then under, in the ordinance, in section five point five oh four B, it says three hundred dot zero zero. Seven three hundred to match all the.
So in the annexation, of course, that's voluntary, uh, that's gone from, uh, uh, zero to seven fifty. Uh, is there a lot of work in that?
Yes, sir.
And of course, we don't, I guess, have a lot of those either.
Correct.
Councilor Riley, on reviewing our review, do you think that you'll need to recuse yourself for, for this portion? Do you mean you have to start from a question earlier?
So I'll make one comment, not specific to the body of the document, but I would like to see this broken out separately. If you're inserting S T R language or something that governs S T Rs, that means I'm recused from looking at variances, vesting determination, zoning, zoning verification, and other bodies of work, which I should have a voice on. So I, I, I would say I object to how this is structured. So with that, I'll recuse.
Just a couple of points to add. I think this might address some of, uh, Tony's concerns. First of all, as we're looking at new sources of revenue in the general fund, this is a general fund-funded department. They're competing for the same dollars that the police department, fire EMS are competing for. So we're looking at this from a very conservative standpoint. Again, how much staff time does it take to do a lot of these things that support the department? So the dollars that we're, will be charging for managing development can't be more than what is needed to support the department function. On the S T R side, um, and if you go back to twenty twenty-two, we got very specific about this in terms of employees and, and time and all of the functions that people that are managing S T Rs perform. Our city attorney then, um, Mick, has also indicated that we can't charge a fee greater than what we need to support that function. So we're not banking cash, but at the same time, this is a source of revenue from developers that does not impact our citizens and brethrens. Um, as you look at the comparison cities, we're pretty much in line. Some of these things are pretty new. Um, we just talked about annexation, you know? Um, I can think of one third-party review of a, an apartment complex, not one of the bigger ones, just to give you an idea. Um, the cost for that review was eighteen thousand dollars. Um, so it, it does take a lot of time. It does take a lot of attention. Um, one, one other item I wanted to clear up, th- this is an item that we've been trying to get on the agenda. We've had on the agenda for the last three meetings. There were some issues with the way we were trying to charge the engineering fees. We had to work with our city attorney to adjust that. And it just so happens to fall on a holiday week when we're having a council meeting. That wasn't intentional, but I just wanted to clarify that this has been on the agenda. We're not trying to, you know, get it live on a holiday week or anything like that. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any, any questions about, uh, anything that I just, just presented.
Anna, would it be possible, to Randy's point, to separate S T R from this and have two ordinances and two fee structures? Instead of having everything in this one, one ordinance?
I believe so, Rachel. I mean, I think we could just write it separately. Um.
Yes, you can definitely split out the S T R fees. Um, and I think, in fact, if, if someone wants to make a motion to table the short-term rental section of this ordinance, then, and then we refrain from discussing the short-term rental fees, the remainder of the decisions, and we handle that as a separate, as a separate agenda. I don't know whether they're, and then, and so we can come back into this, especially other fund-related fees. If anyone is interested in making that motion to table, uh, the S T R permit fees to the next, ready to be given to the council.
I would like to do so, table them to the next meeting, the S T R, uh, revised fees as a separate item.
So is that section, I'll make sure we get it right. Is it? So is that section, I'll make sure I'm getting it right. Is it just section five point four five zero STR permits?
Yes, would it be section two of the document?
That'd be considered section B, section two.
And I mean, zoning board of adjustment, because that will be.
I think we can leave that because the special exception fee is not tied to the short-term rental application. It's just the in the future, we could have different special exceptions that would not be related.
Tony, do you want to amend? Okay. Do you want to amend your motion to be section two that we're tabling for now?
We call it section two?
Section two.
I so, make that motion that we, short-term rentals consider it section two and that we table that till the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Randy, you wanna come join us? Jeffrey, you have a comment on the STRs. Do you want to say that now, or do you want to wait till the next meeting? Okay, please come forward.
Can we entertain that since we just tabled STR portion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, he's leaving.
Here, you wouldn't be here alone.
He's getting his exercise.
Good morning, City Council and Staff. Jeffrey Moore here, city resident and STR owner. I am on the STR Alliance Board, and on behalf of the thousand STR owners here in town, we would like to ask why the two hundred percent increase in our STR permit fees. I believe that was increased in the twenty twenty-two ordinance, just two years ago. We all want to pay our fair share of expenses, and as an STR owner, we want to, we want to pay the fair share, whatever's, whatever's due. But we feel that this increase is not warranted. To justify this increase, we would like to ask the city to detail the expenses incurred by STR owners that warrant this increase. In this increase, I don't mind paying for, again, paying our fair share. And if you have the, some of the fees, I'm just talking about the fee for the annual renewal permit fee here, not the other fees that are associated. Again, need to pay our fair share. I know that police and code enforcement do not incur but five to ten percent of the time on STR properties. So that is not the reason, and I'm pretty sure that's pretty close on those those numbers. I know we have added some staff to help run STR operations, and that's, should be paid for. But what else is added to these expenses? And also I have a question. Why are hotels, and again, I don't know the details of this, but why are hotels not being charged fees for this? Now, we pay, we pay these STR permit fees every year. Hotels do what? Do they pay anything? We both pay hot taxes. Hotels and STRs, should not they share in the same expenses to administer these city administrative duties? Please reconsider these fees, as we think this is a major increase in our fees, and again, just talking about the annual permit fee. Thank you. And that's it.
If I could, Mayor, just offer a clarification. We did add, we did add four staff to manage short-term rentals. We added a full-time code enforcement officer, a STR specialist, a hot collection specialist that's partially funded, and an administrative adjudication officer. So again, when we look at, you know, the the fees, we can only charge a fee. We can't charge a fee any greater than what we need to support those actual positions. So it's either, again, paid by the STRs or it's paid by our taxpayers.
No, but he does bring up a good point. I guess the hotels are not, motels are not charged a fee annual or or any kind of fee besides tax.
When they get a certificate of occupancy, they they pay their fee, and I believe Fire Marshal does a yearly inspection, but right, Development Services does not have to do an inspection on a hotel unless there's a complaint or reason to.
Are you?
But they're not in residential areas, and I mean, I don't know that we're gonna debate that today, the difference between a hotel.
I just want to thank staff for your continued research and looking for ways to to take care of our residents and take care of the work you're doing. With the recent budget vote, times are tighter than before, so I appreciate this user fee. This is something that makes sense across the board. I don't have any issues with any of the fees on this current ordinance draft.
I'll echo Emily's comments. I think the fees are in line. We've been known for charging not charging the fees that we should have charged and for a number of years. So I I agree, and I think the fees are in line with what we need to do. Randy, you want to come back up and comment if you'd like? This is on everything except section two?
There was one additional one here.
When it comes to development, it doesn't look, of course, we got, we talked about the annexation, and that's understandable. It does require a lot of work.
Just a general comment, back to making sure we are covering city staff, time, and effort and energy. The other development fees, do you feel like those are in line, that properly cover in, to city manager's point, we can't, this isn't a revenue generator, but we're adequately covering our costs and all the other areas that are outlined here?
We definitely believe it's getting us closer than where we've been before, so we're we're comfortable with with those that are presented, yes.
Okay.
How about the land use plan change? That didn't change.
Yeah, that's not really a big difference. And maybe with the comp plan, the land use, that's really more of a technical, but it's done at the same time as a zoning change. It's generally when a zoning change goes from like residential to commercial, then then the underlying land use change, but it's done in conjunction at the same time with the with the zoning. So it's, it's usually not a standalone. It's in conjunction with zoning.
Your motion is good. To consider the, this article, this ordinance excluding section two.
Are we, are we good with making this effective today, or do y'all want to push all of this non-section two items to January first?
I didn't really see that there's such a great change on these. And those are for development, and of course, they figure that in their cost. So I don't have a real problem. I do want the transparency to give everybody an opportunity, but most of your developers, more than likely, are out of town.
And is it easier to cut it over January first just for?
I would recommend January first on these, everything.
Rachel, is there a, after publication of ten days, is there any kind of delay we need to put on the effective date for this?
Yeah, I would just suggest the drop sentence, the effective date of January first, that's what comes with this, so I'd decide.
Okay. Can we entertain a motion?
Yes.
A move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash twenty minus section two with an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-four.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries, four zero. Moving on to seven B, consider the approval of resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen R, casting votes for the Gillespie Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five terms. Button.
I believe Shelley's gonna handle this item there. Let me get the PowerPoint up here.
Put together a small PowerPoint to help explain how different options you have to cast your votes.
I'm understanding what there are six, six people, and we need a vote on five?
Right. So on October the third, twenty twenty-three, City Council approved a resolution where you nominated five candidates to the Board of Directors. And I've listed those five candidates here. Tim Dooley was serving as a member and chose not to serve another term, so the City Council nominated Graham Pearson. So the votes are broken down by percentages from the two thousand and twenty-two tax levy, and you can see the city of Fredericksburg has three hundred and eighteen votes. So there are currently six candidates. And I've listed them for you here. So to cast your votes, the city can cast up to five votes. The City Council can divide up their three hundred and eighteen votes, and I gave you an example there. Four candidates can get sixty-three votes, and one candidate can get sixty-six votes. Or the City Council can cast all three hundred and eighteen votes for one candidate. Or you can come up with any other kind of combination you want. That would total three hundred and eighty votes. The only thing that you will need to do is to amend the resolution because the ballot is your exhibit A, so you'll have to amend the resolution to include how you want to cast your votes.
I know we can't divide that equally between five, but that's kind of my idea is to, is just spread it out over five.
Shelley, I'm sorry if you said this, but why are there six candidates and we can only vote for five?
Um, I think the DOS, I'm not sure who nominated someone. Pete Gannus was nominated by another entity. And so there's only five board members, so that's why you can only vote for five.
So there are four voting council members here today, so is this effectively, we have eighty votes each, and we can prioritize?
Get the majority, so.
No, I think it's as a body, we have thirteen. We can't individually have.
We could, we could put all our votes for Graham, which is our appointee.
We have a whopping thirteen percent of this, so. Let's choose why it's looking.
Yeah, I know.
But I'll, I'll just, I don't know if it's appropriate to advocate or but, you know, Graham has had leadership on the council in the past. He's run a software company, extensive management experience. I also think Jill Tabor has extensive amount of management experience as well, so those are two candidates I think would be well-served, our community would be well-served.
So are you making a motion that we pass all our votes for Graham? I mean, I would.
I just made a comment.
Okay, well, I'd like to.
Well, hang on, let's, we're not through discussing.
Well, you can ask for a discussion after you make the motion.
I'd like to continue to discuss. Thank you. Is Todd current, Todd, Don Davis, and James currently on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Jill.
Jill was our nominee last time.
Last time, okay.
The only name that has changed that was on the board is Graham Pearson. It used to be Tim Dooley.
Okay. So Pete Gannus is on the board. No, he's not on the board, okay.
Jill Tabor was appointed when Bartel, when Bartel left, right, Nicole?
She's current, sir.
Todd, replace me.
I personally wouldn't mind spreading our vote to the five excluding Pete Gannus.
That's fine.
And we can add, maybe give Graham a nod, since he's our nominee. He can have the sixty-six. Everyone else gets sixty-three.
Well, I would make that motion if we spread our sixty-three votes between the four candidates and add the sixty-six votes for Graham Pearson.
The four candidates being everyone but Pete, correct?
I'm sorry.
You said the four candidates. Do you mean, do you mean Bierschwal, Davis, and Peter Paper?
Yeah, the four, which would be the ones that are placedly in, on the board. With the new one being Graham Pearson. Is that correct? Yeah. That's Don Davis. That, they've got Don David, but it's Don Davis.
Is that sufficient, Shelley, for a motion?
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Tim. We'll move on to item eight, city manager's report.
Okay, Mayor, Council, let me get this pulled up right quick. I have a lot to cover today. I'll try to get through this fairly quickly and answer any questions that you might have. This has been a very well-received update. I've been using it not only for this meeting, but coffee with the city manager. I cover a lot of this at town hall meetings. I have people emailing me and asking questions. Now, I was just mentioning to one of the council members the other day that I can remember five years ago, coffee with the city manager, when there were some questions about sales tax revenues. And we had to get back to that person, and now that sort of thing is top of mind for city staff and and city council as well as, as well as the public. So jumping right in again, I'm gonna touch on development. I have a a brief project update that I'll give. I'll cover some financial information, and then I have a few miscellaneous updates to give. Comprehensive plan, and Anna, I didn't know if you might want to touch on a few of these dates just quickly.
So we met last week with the CPAC, the Advisory Committee, to go over the Parks Master Plan, so that's back at Hafen Associates for their final draft. And we will be meeting with the CPAC on December twelfth to review the final draft of of the comprehensive plan. And so we'll be looking to you to set up a joint meeting with P and Z in January, so you can review that together. And the draft will be available during that time, so we'll have about a month for the, both drafts to be on the website, printed at City Hall, and we're still tweaking our our engagement with with the final document. These documents are hard for staff, much less the average citizen, to get through. So how we want to break that up for survey responses, but that'll be open for about a month, and then coming to you in February, P and Z separately, and council ultimately for adoption.
Okay, thank you, Anna. Jumping into development activity, and this is a comparison, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, site plans, zoning, and Platts. Again, I talk about this a lot. We talk about this a lot. The increase in activity in that twenty, really twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe, and we're starting to come down off of that just a little bit. You can see that trend. Commercial building permits, and I'll talk about residential building permits here in just a little bit. But you can see, if you drew a line across the middle right there, we're just about average in terms of numbers. Annual numbers, again, twenty fourteen through present.
I'm sorry, you can go back one. I'm just, I'm just curious, because I can't get through a meeting without thinking the state legislature. I wonder if some of this is due to the annexation changes, because with with some of the limits that have been put on cities and our ability to annex, I mean, we're dealing with maybe a lower amount of acreage overall. I mean, is that, is that something that's brought up a lot?
I mean, if we had looked at the trajectory we were on and the annexation plan. I mean, if we had looked at the trajectory we were on and the annexation plan that we were following until we were cut off, yes, I would say we would probably have more development in the pipeline. But since that got cut off, yeah, now it's, it's voluntary, and we've got a few that are being requested at this time. Um, but it's, it's definitely slowed it down.
Didn't that law go into effect twenty nineteen? Am I wrong there?
There were some change, yes. The big annexation change was the previous legislative session.
But then this past session, what was done? Do you limit the city's ability to annex, or a city would have to pull back annexation? If it hasn't been completed, they'd have to pull back services, right? That was twenty twenty-three mostly?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
That's right. But in two thousand and nineteen, we were able to put together an annexation plan that included several large parcels that we could go ahead and annex even after the two thousand and nineteen state legislature.
Well, interest rates.
That's the biggest threat, that all of those factors come into play. And moving on to commercial projects under construction, um, of course, we have the middle school under construction, other projects, notable projects, the immigrant expect CEO sometime this year. Is that still valid, Anna?
Yes.
Albert Hotel, of course, under construction again, new contractor. I'm not going to throw out a, a completion date there. I think various stages of that are going to open at different times, but certainly sometime well into next year.
Clinton, that's accurate. We met with a developer last week. They are looking to open up the Main Street. The historic properties will be opening before the main hotel, so we'll see more. Those, uh, cones should be pulled back to just in front of the, the new portion soon, so there is progress being made.
And let's look through here. Of course, the HTO, just right down the street here is under construction. Uh, that's something new. The Warner Warehouse is complete. That entire area is transforming right there. And you can see some of the other, uh, commercial building, uh, projects that are happening.
So the surgery center is back on?
Anna, can you answer that question?
I guess they haven't started. I think, um, they're having a lot of state regulations to go under as well, so, um, but we've issued the building permit.
Okay, on the residential side, and I throw this number out all the time, in terms of lots on the ground, uh, we have twelve hundred and twenty-eight total lots. Uh, that number has been the same in the last, um, number of updates that I've given. And again, as we've talked about water throughout the summer, we always tie water to, uh, new construction, specifically, uh, single-family residential construction. As you can see right here, we're up just a little bit from the average line, probably, but we typically issue sometime, somewhere between fifty and sixty-five roughly, uh, building permits for single-family residential homes, uh, each year, maybe seventy. Uh, and again, that spike that we saw when we saw a lot of activity in that twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one timeframe.
But can you go back to the previous slide? On the Osted Phase One and Two, any movement on Phase One being sold?
I believe it's still on the market.
Still on the, okay.
Uh, then you mentioned water. Have you gotten any kind of latest updates? I assume we're improving.
Yes, sir. I have those updates coming up in just a couple of slides. Okay, multifamily under construction, and again, this number moves just a little bit. Five hundred and forty-three units under construction, uh, currently. As you can see right here, this number has increased from seventy at the last update to one ten, so we're starting to see some of those being completed. While at the same time, uh, we have more approved work construction. So this bottom-line figure right here, thirteen oh three, is up just a little bit from last time. But that's the breakdown, again, about, uh, a little bit over half, um, either completed or under construction, and about that many approved work construction.
So we're the six fifty that haven't started.
And again, let's see if I can go back, and Anna, you might, uh, touch on.
Yes, Keller Oaks is one.
Right.
Verandas down at Frieden was a large one, three hundred and five units that haven't started. The Botanica on Friendship Lane and Seiko. And then we, what's added here at the very bottom is the Alora May condos. Those are the, the new condominiums on Friendship. So we've added that to approved but not started.
Okay, moving on to Pollock Works Projects. Again, East Main Street Waterline Project, uh, this project has been completed. Tech Dot will be doing a, uh, full mill and overlay, including this section sometime after April next year, after the eclipse.
Well, there's two phases of that project, so they will come in and do some repair work. That was scheduled for the end of this year. We're still waiting on a definitive timeline from Tech Dot. And then the full mill and overlay is scheduled for April of next year. It, it, it will be night work, so that will help a little, but they're aware that's a busy time of year for the city.
They always schedule either during tour season or some of the.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Okay, moving on, and I'll have Garrett give an update on the South Plano Shared Use Bridge, uh, project.
Yes, so we are working closely with the contractor. We've had a number of site visits. Uh, basically, the construction of this project should only take about a month or six weeks. Uh, the long lead time is the bridge itself. Um, we've talked to the manufacturer. Right now, that's about five months. So we're looking at probably May of next year for construction, uh, but everything's moving along well. Tech Dot has approved everything, so we are good to go on that project.
Will the bridge come in one piece?
Yes. Actually, there's two pieces of it.
Good.
Uh, so everything will be constructed, and they'll just set the bridge down on the pilings, and that's that.
That'll be something to watch.
I think the council should be the first to walk across it. What do you, what do you think? Okay, so water supply update. Again, this is a, uh, look at our Canalwell Field, which is about three or four miles out, uh, two ninety east. Just recently constructed a storage tank, pump station, and water line into town from this particular well field. As you can see, we have rebounded, uh, to just a little bit better than where we were in this well field last year. Um, I'm going to show you this graph and another one from our old San Antonio Road well field that looks very similar, but this is mainly due to, uh, not much outdoor watering, uh, happening the last month or so. Uh, we see that rebound. It's not, um, specifically tied to rainfall. Um, we say this all the time, too. For a rainfall event, if you get an inch of rain, we recharge about four percent of that into the aquifer generally, and it takes about ten months for that water to get there. So when we look at that real intensive early spring, summertime usage, if you back that up about ten months, that's about when we need to be getting the rains. That's exactly when we didn't get the rains this year. So I expect this, these levels to go back down, um, as we get into the spring season, but hopefully level out. Uh, as we get into those summer months again, we'll start to see a little bit more of that recharge. But doing a little bit better in terms of water surface elevation in this particular well field. Uh, this is the old San Antonio Road. Again, if you back up to, uh, December of last year, you can see we were just below, uh, eighty-four feet below the surface, and we are currently, uh, a little bit lower than that, probably about four, three or four feet lower than that. This well field typically, um, rebounds a little bit more slowly. Portales River is a little bit closer to the Canalwell Field generally. It's a little bit more under the influence of the river.
So if we have a wetter, winter is predicted, then that really doesn't help us in the summertime.
It would help as we get toward the end of the summer. It all helps, but, uh, in terms of that recharge that you could actually see, we really needed to start seeing some of those rains in August, September. Just as a reminder, uh, in July and August combined, we had one-tenth of an inch of rainfall total. But I'm optimistic that the weather patterns are going to change. We're going to continue to get rain, uh, hopefully through the fall into spring next year. Uh, that will certainly help. Doesn't help our water revenues, but it will definitely help the aquifer. I'll take water over with money in the bank in any single day. Okay, moving to parks, and we wanted to just get these projects up in front of the council as a reminder. Uh, we have market plots renovations, the project on the corner, uh, that will be, come, uh, wrapping up, uh, next month. We have some equipment. You can see Parks Master Plan. Uh, we moved a little bit of funding into FY twenty-four for the completion of that. The market plots restroom renovations, waiting on estimates there. Uh, Pioneer Pavilion renovations, and again, you can remember some of the vivid pictures you saw there. Hundred and fifty thousand, waiting on estimates, working on estimates. Uh, Old Fair Park Storage, storage out of the park, so we don't have to move equipment back and forth from the warehouse, working on estimates there as well. Uh, the restroom replacement at Lady Bird Johnson, uh, Park. Uh, this is the main restroom in the middle. Uh, order was placed. It should be installed mid-year next year. Um, market plot storage expansion, uh, another project on the square, again, working on estimates there. So we'll continue to, um, bring some of these back to the council for your approval and update you as we move forward.
And before we go off this slide, just wanted to remind us of what was cut from the budget. We've lost the grounds master, forty-five hundred, batting cages and storage renovations, sand volleyball renovations, then track and two golf carts totaling three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that will not be spent on our parks this year.
Clinton, back to the market plot renovation piece, um, some of the pavers that was damaged during Oktoberfest. Uh, have we resolved re, uh, payment and restoration of those?
Uh, yes, we have. There was about between nine and ten thousand dollars worth of damage done. Um, those pavers will be, um, replaced. I don't have a schedule on that at this time.
And what about the, um, the playground area that put a bit of damage around that, the soft padding material for kids?
Right. We're still working with the manufacturer to get a recommendation on how to address that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And those costs will be taken care of by us and then reimbursed by, are we going to get those reimbursed or no?
Right, Oktoberfest, um, will pay for half of the pavers. The city's paying the other half, uh, it's currently the agreement.
Why not the whole thing? I'm just curious, because I thought they were going to pay the whole thing.
I would ask why as well.
Right. I can try to get an answer, uh, why that was not a decision that I made. That was not a decision city staff made.
More to come on that, because.
So is that it?
I thought the agreement was to pay.
So is that it?
Well, it's not done yet. I can give the council an update on that, uh, next time around, or I could give you a little bit more detail on, uh, that decision.
I think we would strongly re- encourage looking at that again and overturning that decision.
Does that have a market plots redevelopment commission decision?
And I think, and I think the reason for that, there may have been some damage to the pavers done prior to that event that was existing, um, when we had Oktoberfest this year. Oktoberfest definitely did have a significant impact on the square. We had, uh, pavers that were stained grease that could not be cleaned, have to be replaced. Um, floor clips that, uh, caused pavers to be cracked and broken, a lot of that sort of thing. But I, I, I think the reasoning was probably the, the fact that we couldn't prove that event caused all of the damage from the full, um, analysis of the, the surface out there. But I can give council a lot more detail on that.
And just to add to that a little, some of that damage was over by the new annex, so it was more related to the ongoing construction in that area. There were some trench failures where some utilities weren't properly backfilled.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, moving on to our special event schedule in November. Uh, of course, tonight, we have the, uh, Nights of Lights begins. Uh, so for, for those of you that would like to come out, that's a really good event. Uh, bear the winds tonight, bring a jacket, uh, but we'll kick off, uh, the real season of lights, uh, tonight, turning everything on. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Okay, moving on to our financial update, and I'm going to have Krista cover, uh, this first slide. And Krista, can you see this, or let me, let me turn this for you.
All right, um, just before I get started, I just wanted to let you know that the dashboards on OpenGov for City Council are all updated with the September information, and we're also working on the, um, the printed council reports, and you should be getting those through your email, um, hopefully before the end of this, before our Thanksgiving break. Uh, but reviewing, just a high-level review of what you're seeing on that slide. Um, we came in, in, um, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, higher in revenues than we had budgeted, and we came in in expenses lower than budgeted. So you'll see that we're a hun- for general fund, we're at a hundred and seven percent of revenues and only eighty-nine percent of budgeted expenses. And then on the enterprise funds, um, same, about the same, a hundred and eight percent of revenue and ninety-two percent of expenses. And, and just, I was jotting down some of the, um, variances. So we had revenue increases in, um, sales tax, just a little bit. Um, interest income, development services fees, uh, landfill, electric, EMS revenues, and, um, drainage, and also tourism came in a little bit higher, um, because of interest revenue. And then those expense savings, um, they basically fell in personnel savings because of being short-staffed, and also capital improvements, um, basically, uh, water and, um, stormwater. Any questions?
Was that savings due to us not ordering the equipment that we had intended to order?
A lot of it is the, um, the capital for water, and those projects have been rebudgeted in two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
You have a question, Randy?
Looking at the food and wine fest, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole here, but, uh, our total expenditure, if I'm reading, is two hundred and sixty-two K roughly? Am I reading it right?
Yes, um, food and wine typically, because the timing of expenses, um, they, they'll show a bigger loss in the fiscal year than they do in a calendar year.
Okay, and then we reconcile once.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Is there a slide that's going to show the, um, water revenues?
Yes.
If you can pass it away.
Okay, moving on to, uh, sales tax. Um, when we look at October, and again, we're looking at the red line, uh, there, um, just pretty close to the top. As you can see, we're down just a little bit. Well, first of all, FY twenty twenty-four actuals, we're down a three-point-two percent so far from, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, our FY twenty-three actuals, we're up five-point-two percent over two thousand and twenty-two. And when you look at the trend, we have increased fairly significantly. Again, when you look at the development slides, you can tell the economy was doing really good back then. Um, COVID, very busy. We saw this huge increase, um, twenty-two into, into twenty-three. But as you see, in FY twenty-four, October compared to twenty-three, twenty-two and twenty-one, we're starting to come back down just a little bit. Um, the same with, uh, the November numbers, uh, we're trending down just a little bit. Krista, remind me what we projected in terms of, um, sales tax revenues in the budget?
So we increased it just about a little over one percent, so we're budgeted at nine million.
Okay, and currently we're trending down three-point-two percent.
And that lags, again, and there's a two-month lag, is that right? Okay, because I know with Oktoberfest, again, some of the numbers we talked about, I've been told, we went from twenty-seven to thirty-four thousand, I think it was total, attendees at that. I'm just curious what that bubble looks like.
Right, and again, if you generally look at October through December, even January, we don't see a huge jump in revenues. What was the year we didn't have Oktoberfest? Was it twenty-one? That line is very similar to the other lines you see there. So again, that's not necessarily refract- reflected in that direct inject into sales tax dollars that we can see.
Great, thank you.
Okay, property tax collected, actual five. Okay, property tax collected, actual five point, um, nine seven for the budget of five point nine five. And again, you can see the comparison, twenty twenty through twenty twenty-three, right there. That's the property tax, the, uh, M and O, and the INS broken out. And again, we have very little debt. Okay, um, start with electric revenues here, and the blue line represents the twenty twenty-four data compared to the red twenty-three data and green twenty-two data. You can see on the electric residential sales, uh, we're up just a little bit, um, on both residential and commercial. Moving on to water, again, this is very early, uh, in the year. It's not a very intensive, uh, watering time, so we're roughly, uh, average, a little bit below average, I would say, for this time of the year, uh, in water sales on the residential, uh, side, um, about where we need to be on the commercial side. This is something that we'll take a, a close look at every month moving forward as we get into or past, uh, January into, uh, the spring of next year. Did you have any specific questions, Emily, about water revenues or?
No, just looking how it's tracking and seeing toward conservation, if we've hit that twenty percent. You know, hard.
Right.
Year, month, five months, it's hard, year over year.
We, we did, we did get close the first couple of months, and I think people responded to their yards and, you know, a lot, a lot of trees dying, and we did see an increase, um, you know, a little bit beyond. But as you can see, the twenty twenty-three line, and that went into effect in April. You can see that it is consistently, April, May, June, July, below last year's average. But again, we get into August, um, one, no, four hundredths of an inch of rain in August and twenty-six days over a hundred degrees. I mean, just unheard of for this, uh, this part of the region. But generally, you know, it's down a little bit. Okay, and again, this is just a breakdown of, uh, what our, um, property tax rate has been since, uh, twenty sixteen. The, uh, average home price of four hundred and fifty dollars, that's seven hundred and forty-three dollars, that's, that breaks down to sixty-two dollars a month. Okay, any questions on financial update? Moving on to, uh, Police Department, and as you can see, the activity is definitely picking up. Uh, this is calls for service. You can see how we compare October to September and August. A lot of special events coming in, uh, with seven hundred, uh, seventeen hundred to, uh, total calls for service. This is number of arrests. Again, you can see that trend, uh, going up, um, from August, September. warnings versus citations. Just a breakdown. And then finally, traffic accidents. We do have our police chief here. If you have any questions, uh, for him specifically. Okay, moving on to the fire EMS report. Again, uh, we're up again, um, for the month of October. This is October data, uh, with three hundred and eighty-seven, uh, total incidents. Uh, in terms of, uh, daily, we had an average of twelve, minimum of four, uh, twenty-one in one day, uh, around the eleventh, it looks like, of October.
Majority of these are EMS.
Right, I'll show that breakdown here, too. So this is how we compare, um, these numbers compared to, uh, previous months, starting January. You can see that was the next highest month at three seventy-four, and we've generally been twen- trending up since June, where we had, uh, three hundred and fifty-three. Again, uh, up October to three hundred and eighty-seven. So as we talk about the, um, the needs of fire EMS, um, not only the employees, um, we are needing, needing equipment, um, new ambulances, new fire apparatus and so forth. We'll continue to watch this line right here, but as Chief Fizzle indicated last time, uh, this number appears to be, you know, consistently trending up. Okay, here's the breakdown, Bobby, and, uh, the majority of our, our calls are medical-related. As you can see, med, um, one, two, three, and four, uh, make up the bulk of, of the responses. And breaking that down into more of a heat map, this has changed just a little bit in terms of the, um, the days where we're seeing the most activity in October. It looks like Thursday and Friday.
But can you go back to the? That's fine. We've got, uh, emergency, is that engine one?
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily mean that was all fire, it could also be EMS.
Right, if we have an accident, um, anywhere in town, we typically send that unit out, um, with a crew. A lot of times, it acts as a barrier. So you can tie that, you know, to traffic accidents. So we talked about transfers. Um, our transfers are up just a little bit, trending down generally since August. These should continue to trend down as we're able to handle more of those patients here locally. Okay, the brush fire season this year, again, thankfully, uh, we didn't have a, a lot of large brush fires, but you can see that the numbers were up in that August, September timeframe. And then our heat map, and this is a breakdown between fire and EMS. Uh, most of the calls inside the city are EMS-related. You can see that we do respond to both, uh, out in the county, but specific fire calls, you can see right there. This is also very interesting when we talk about, um, power response from Fredericksburg Fire EMS out into the county, mutual aid given, um, mutual aid received. Again, I've mentioned this last time, when we go out west in the county toward Harper, um, we typically give aid to that area. Uh, when we go out to ninety, the Stonewall Fire Department is very responsive. They typically assist us in aiding in incidents out in that area, that part of the county. Again, this is the heat map. Most of the activity going on within, uh, the city limits. Okay, any question about, uh, our EMS update? Okay, City Department openings, and I think the last time I presented this, we had sixteen positions. Uh, we have twelve open positions now. Uh, you can see that we have, uh, two in fire EMS, uh, three in PD. Crew worker and electrician in our water department. We've had our staff engineer position posted for, going on eight months now. I think we've had maybe one or one applicant. Um, any, any type of professional positions like that, it's, it's very difficult to, um, attract, uh, those, those type of staff to your organization. Street Department Heavy Equipment Specialist, uh, we have had just a little bit of movement out on our Development Services position. Senior Planner and Resort Preservation Officer, hopefully some good news to come on that in the near future. And then you can see sanitation and vegetation management. Recently built positions, we have an apprentice arborist and vegetation management, correct? And a recent promotion in our water department, went nullering to crew chief in the water department. Okay, and wanted to give you just a, a brief update on some landscape improvements that have recently be, been completed at the golf course. Uh, this is looking at the back of the, the pro shop. This area was weeds and beat down, uh, grass, a lot of foot traffic through there. Uh, this was professionally, uh, done by a local landscape company. Looks very good. It complements a lot of the other zerscape improvements that have been made. You can see in the background. Uh, that's the scoreboard in the background. That was the first area, um, that they tackled. And then finally, this new area right here. And I will say that, um, this was paid for from proceeds from the golf course. Uh, with the exception of the clock, um, was donated by a local individual who plays golf every day. I'm not gonna name his name, uh, walks and plays golf every day and has actually contributed quite a bit, uh, beyond this to the golf course. Okay, and finally, I wanted to give an update, just a brief update on the Fredericksburg Citizen University. So far, we have ten applicants. Uh, and again, we're looking for fifteen to twenty, um, for that roughly eleven-month uh, class that will start in January. And Shelley, help me out with the deadline for applications.
December the thirteenth.
So December thirteenth. So we'll give an update to the council, second meeting in December, after we receive all of the, uh, applications, and that will likely be something, um, we may get your input on in terms of, um, those who are participating. But it's been very well received, running into a couple of people at the grocery store that have asked me about it and, uh, town halls and so forth. Uh, so some of the names that I, I see on the list here, some people that I've met, getting out. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Appreciate the time and effort and energy you put into this, and I think this is well received, as you mentioned, at the, uh, Coffee with City Manager and Town Hall, so it's, it's a great blueprint for communicating for citizens. Thank you.
Well, I give full credit to my staff. They put this report together and they make my job very easy, so all the credit to them.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll move on to the few, items for future agenda.
Okay, Mayor Council, coming up on December fifth, we have a speed limit change on Tobe Dale, uh, down to fifty miles per hour. Again, this is, this is something that's been mentioned, um, at a number of different events. It's, it's something that we put on Tech Dot's radar a little bit over a year ago. And help me out with the limits here, Garrett. It's going to be from sixteen southwest to?
To the city limits.
To the city.
There in Livo Creek.
Okay, and again, this is a development corridor. We have backwoods going in there, a lot of, um, storage, small businesses going in, uh, there's a lot of cement trucks pulling out there. There's been some redevelopment, so as there's more traffic there, Tech Dot will continue to lower that speed limit in this area. Uh, we have the, uh, evaluation of our municipal judge. And then we have a couple of items that are not on the list, including, um, a resolution, consideration of a resolution, uh, for the creation of a police foundation fund. And then also a police department mutual aid group agreement between the City of Fredericksburg, Kerrville, and Bernie that we'll be bringing back to you.
Clinton, and the, um, the Police Foundation, is that, is the legal ease, has that been completed at this point?
Yes, it has.
Okay, so we're in good shape there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we wanted to, um, to bring about these items to the council so that, um, you have plenty of time to read through, ask questions, get a really good understanding of what this means for the City of Fredericksburg, and help us make that decision. Also, I wanted to point out that we do have a special meeting. Uh, we have it listed as a council workshop, but it will be a special meeting work session coming up December eighteenth at noon in the fire training room. Uh, this will be the one item agenda where we discuss the, uh, the composition and other, uh, items regarding the, uh, twenty twenty-five Food and Wine Fest event that we'll begin, begin planning in the next couple of months. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Any questions?
Couple of these, um, future agenda item, items are, um, they say November or December. But are we, are we good on tracking those? I'm looking at, um, the John Klein Meeting Room.
I think the Parks Department is waiting until it gets closer to being finished.
Anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.